I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approve the executive session minutes of January 22, 2013, special town council meeting minutes of January 14, 2013, executive session minutes of January 14, 2013, set February 19, 2013, as a hearing day for the commercial haulers license filed by T&amp;J Sanitation. Anything need to be pulled?
Yeah. Pull the, both the executive session minutes.
Okay, anything else?
With that, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of the executive session minutes, the two executive session minutes listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First, public forum, anybody out there wishing to speak?
Why are we pulling January 14?
Did I say January 14?
Yes.
I thought you said both executive session.
Both, he said.
Okay.
Yeah, he pulled them and they'll have to come up in another meeting.
Oh, he pulled them like-
He pulled both.
Right.
So, okay, he didn't just pull them for immediate, he pulled them for-
Hold.
Later.
Take them all.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Everybody's got to read them and also there might be some errors in it, so.
Okay. First, public forum, anyone out there wishing to speak? Okay. Next on the agenda is the town solicitor's report, Brushy Brook Shab decision. Pat?
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that Shab upheld the planning board decision in Brushy Brook, which was a terrific victory for the town, and his kind of congratulations to go around, starting with the planning board, which did an amazing job from the get-go on that because it went over a long period of time, multiple hearings, lots and lots of hearings, and if it wasn't for the great work that the planning board did, there would have been, you know, no chance of prevailing in Shab. The second place I want to direct congratulations is to Scott Lebec in my office, who put his heart and soul into this thing, and I'm really happy that it worked out for his sake because he just, he really put his heart and soul into the thing, and he did a fabulous job with it. And then the last place is with the Shab board itself. One of the things this showed us is that cities and towns are now going to get a fair shake, basically, when they go in front of this board. This is a brand-new board, all new people that were recently appointed, no holdovers from the previous board, a complete blank slate, new chairperson in the chair, you know, and they were a fabulous bunch. It was a unanimous decision, which is crazy from that board, a unanimous decision in favor of the city or town, and it was very comforting to us to see that this new board is going to be much more open, obviously, to the arguments that the cities and towns are making. The Westerly Sun ran an editorial that was terrific, in case anybody didn't see it, congratulating the town, and I just wanted to read you a couple of sentences from it. It says, "The Hopkinton Planning Board deserves to be proud of its work in this case." That's absolutely true. It says, "The Hopkinton Board did a thorough job going up against a state law that is seen by many as a steamroller. Board members set the standard for other towns battling such bloated projects, seeking to exploit a law that we agree is flawed. They've done the region a huge service," and I just couldn't have said it better myself. They, you know, they did a wonderful job, and everybody should pat them on the back when they see the planning board members, and we just could not be happier about this decision. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, next up-
Could I do a quick comment? I think, I think, because I just, I'm still wow, I'm still in the wow mode, and, and, basically, I just said to people, you know, we'll just do what we have to do, we'll appeal their decision, we just, you know, it was going to be another whatever.
Rubber stamp.
Yeah, and that didn't happen. It wasn't that we won, it was that they listened, they took their time, and I'm just so proud of everybody you mentioned, and it is, in the calls that we've been getting, people are very excited that this happened, and it is a state, it affects the entire state, so, thank you to all involved, and I'm still, I'm still flabbergasted for the big decision.
Yeah, sure, Barbara.
I'd also like to thank the planning board. I'm the planning board liaison, and I have been at many of those meetings, and I mean, they have discussed this for a year or longer, in incredibly long discussions, detailed discussions, listened to so many people from the town, allowed everyone to speak fully, and Howard Walker in particular on the board, the whole board, but Howard Walker really helped pull that together with Scott Lebec, and Scott did a great job. It just was, you know, the best way for a town and its citizens and its commissioners to work. It was excellent.
I'd like to commend-
Sure, Scott.
First of all, I do commend our planning board, commend our solicitor, and it shows that when you have the goods, if you will, and you address a board which is quasi-judicial, I would say, and you have to make a case, and it's not based on a motion, it's coming up with the goods and the points. I'd like to take an opportunity, because I'm usually a critic of Charahoe, that I understand our superintendent Barry Ritchie did provide input as far as the impact of that development on schoolchildren, and I want to take this opportunity of saying something positive about his contribution, because, number one, I'm known as probably one of the leading critics of Charahoe and Hopkinton, and I think that his testimony was very important, because we're very concerned about development and the impact on our schools, and I just want to say that. So, we can bask in a great victory, certainly the planning board and solicitor, and I know a lot of us might be tempted to take credit, but, and there was a lot of people, just regular citizens. I know there was a petition a few years back regarding that, and so, it's a great victory, and we can certainly savor that, and we'll see what the future brings as far as those type of issues. But, the impact for other communities, it was a learning experience, not only for Hopkinton, but many other towns, how they're going to prepare for this, so, this is like a textbook case, if you will, I think, for all the communities in Rhode Island. Thank you.
David?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm extraordinarily pleased. It's just not the schools that would be affected by this, it would be the fire departments, the police department, the highway department, groundwater would be affected in the area, the aquifer, so, it's, this town, as other towns, have to grow over a certain period of time, but to, to have this kind of impact just like that on the town, no town should have to tolerate something like that, so, extraordinarily pleased, I really am.
Yeah, and also, to thank the planner, Jim Scott Lebec, from Pat's office. It speaks volumes, I think, too, to the way that we incorporate the affordable housing into our comp plan and everything that we do. I think that really, really-
That was a huge part of it.
Huge, huge part of it, you know, and we're not just kicking the affordable housing piece aside, we're incorporating, actually incorporating it in everything that we do going forward, so, I think our percentage of affordable is just under 7 percent, so, we're volumes ahead of any other town in the area when it comes to affordable, so I think that also helped our situation, too, but I want to thank everyone also that was involved in the decision.
It can still get appealed, by the way, I probably should mention that. The developer can appeal to the Superior Court. As of the decision being rendered, they weren't sure if they were going to do it or not, so we'll just have to wait and see. But I, it's sustainable in Superior Court, so, we're not too concerned.
Great. Let's see. Next on the agenda is the town manager's report, Bill McGary.
Thank you. Just very briefly, during the month of January, I spent the majority of my time working with finance director Laura Kenyon, preparing the town's FY 2013-14 annual budget, and that was delivered to the town council on February 1. And lastly, I worked with town labor attorney Vin Regasta, solicitor Patricia Buckley, director Laura Kenyon, and the local police union to help resolve three previously unresolved contract issues. That leaves one issue remaining, and we're currently addressing that, and hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to resolve that last contract negotiation.
Is that a major issue? Major issue, Bill?
Oh, no, no. We don't anticipate any problems.
Good.
Any questions for Bill? Well, I want to thank you for putting those budget forms together in a nice format-
Great job.
-the binder and all the sessions, the budget sessions we have. Very nice to have it all concise and not, you know-
Oh, and page numbers. Page numbers, oh my God. Page numbers. It was fabulous, and Joyce did a great job.
I was just going to say, I'd like to take credit for that, but that's-
Well, Joyce, Secretary Joyce, yeah, she did all that work, and she did a nice job.
It's very user-friendly.
Yes, very good. Okay, anyone else have any for Bill, yes? Next on the agenda under new business is consider, discuss, and act upon the agreement between the town of Hopkinton and Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to enable the town to receive a grant in the amount of $25,000 to fund a town-wide stormwater management program plan. I know, Bill, the town manager's been involved in this from the very beginning, and I'll probably just turn it over to you to get that going for us.
Sure, thank you. As you can see in your packet, you have the proposed agreement between the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the town of Hopkinton to finance a townwide stormwater management program plan through the use of a $25,000 grant from Rhode Island DEM. Town planner Jim Lambfair has been working very closely with deputy chief Sue Kieran of DEM, the Office of Water Resources, to fund this plan, and I've asked both of them to come this evening in case the council had any questions. Now, although the proposed agreement provides for the development of this plan, it includes a 25 percent soft match that the town has already accounted for through its in-kind services. This agreement, this proposed agreement has also been reviewed and approved by town solicitor Pat Buckley. Now, how this came to light is that we are one of the only few towns in the state that does not have a stormwater management plan, and we're required by law to have one, by the Rhode Island general laws, and basically, it's entitled "Water Pollution," which prohibits the discharge of pollutants into the waters of the state. Fussin' O'Neill, the town's on-call engineering services, and engineer Jim Reardon, who's also with us tonight, has also made a separate proposal that we'll hear after this, to draft a stormwater management plan and three standalone ordinances customized for the town for inclusion into the town code of ordinances, which may, may be required pursuant to the MS4 stormwater general permit. So this is a basic agreement that's, as I said earlier, has been approved by the solicitor's office between the town and DEM. This money is available now, and we're required by statute to have a plan, so after considerable discussion, we thought now would be the time to move forward. DEM has projected a completion date by December 31 of this year.
Okay, the only question I have, I guess, and I'm not sure, maybe you know, Bill, is just maybe to frame this up a little bit, initially, this is just for town-owned buildings for this management plan?
You know, I'm going to defer to Sue Kieran from DEM.
I have a question, too.
Can I answer from here?
Please come to the podium, thank you.
I'm happy to be here tonight. My name is Sue Kieran, and I'm the deputy chief in the DEM Office of Water Resources, and your question-
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, at this point in time, for this plan, does it actually just, does it just pertain to town-owned buildings at this point? And then, would it eventually spread to commercially private?
It relates to town-owned or controlled stormwater infrastructure, so it's not limited just to the buildings and the impervious cover, but also to drainage system piping and catch basins and possibly drainage swales that the town owns or has some responsibility for.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so, yeah, let's start-
And part of the project will actually lead to better characterizing and defining just what that is. The department recognizes you're one of our more rural communities. There have been 36 of these grants given out to communities across Rhode Island, and so we're familiar with working with some of our towns that are less densely developed, and you may find out that there's a fairly limited amount of infrastructure that you own and control, and the state obviously recognizes that some of it's owned and controlled by the state, including our Department of Transportation.
Yeah, so, just one more quick question on that. Do you think that this would actually, might spread out to private homes and commercial buildings down the line, or you think that-
It depends on the connection of those properties to the-
Stormwater drains.
-stormwater infrastructure that you, you have as a community.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Barbara?
Yeah, so, I want to just follow, that was my question, too, Frank really started it, is that this is all municipal land, municipal infrastructure, so it's not just our town buildings, but it's all of the swales, all of the, anything that's near a road that would take care of stormwater, so you'll look at both the state-owned as well as the town-owned?
I think one of the objectives in this process will be to help clarify where the state, particularly through the DOT, has ownership and control versus a town road or town drainage, drainage systems. It really has to do, some of the regulatory jurisdiction has to do with the actual discharge from a storm drain system, so there needs to be a pipe or a conveyance that comes to a point that discharges that stormwater into a water body. That's, and then you map back from that, and depending on what it intersects with and connects with, it will influence the area the town would be most concerned at looking at, whether there are any needed improvements or changes.
And that would be something, commercial, manufacturing, residential, if they actually have an issue with the both state and municipal infrastructure, then Fussin' O'Neill, the engineer, would be able to let us know that there are problems coming up down the road and that we need to address them, or we need to be aware of them and see what we can do with them.
Right, so the planning process will actually bring together the physical infrastructure and define the town's role and responsibility in that, and also acknowledge where there may be other infrastructure, which might be privately owned even, that's dealing with stormwater in the town. We're going to couple that with information on the natural resources of the community, the surface water resources of the community, the condition that they're in, and our current state of knowledge on where there's water quality problems. And where those two things intersect, there'll be, it'll lead to recommendations about projects that might be undertaken in the future, if necessary, to link to fixing water quality problems.
And especially since we have so many rivers and streams and ponds and-
Right. So, one of the things, in this watershed, the state has looked hard at bacterial contamination in our waterways, and given the high recreational use of the wood hole, entire wood pocket tuck watershed, there may be, that would, might be a typical kind of thing that would be, come up as a project that, to help control the loadings of those pathogens into the waterways through stormwater, and that's done through just better treatment of the stormwater before it hits a river or stream.
Very good, thank you. This will be, I think, a good, a good thing for us.
David, do you have anything for Sue?
No. Good, good.
I think that Doug, and Chris was preliminary, but Doug Reese had been working on this project, not this particular, but on stormwater drainage, and knowing that this was something the town was going to have to do, and he worked with the GIS, and they were, they were locating all of these catch basins, et cetera, all over town-
Yes.
-and they completed that, and that was, became part of our order, because it's part of our assets. I don't know how well some of these things are, have been, I think they found out that some of them are in, you know, disrepair, but, but anyway, so, so I know that this has been something that we've been, in a sense, knowing we had to do, and also dreading, and because it's such a, it's such a big responsibility, but we appreciate very much that we've received a grant to help us to do it, because that makes all the difference for us. Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Yes, I have two questions, or comments. Has, what has your agency done as far as the state roads in town, which obviously wouldn't be under the jurisdiction of the town, with the same concerns and dilemma?
So, our department, there is a regulatory requirement for our State Department of Transportation under the Clean Water Act provisions that apply to the town, they also apply to the state, and they apply to transportation agencies, so DEM has an ongoing conversation and working arrangement with the Department of Transportation to try to work with them to prioritize where they're doing maintenance, prioritize retrofitting of their infrastructure. They clearly also face a pretty significant lack of resources to do everything that you'd like to see done, but we're working with them on that, so we recognize that the state has to be pursuing stormwater management, improving it in, you know, just as vigorously as we would, we would encourage towns to do the same.
I know that we have a lot of storm boards and commissions in town, one of them was this Waste Water Management District Commission, which needs members, so, just to put the word out to the public, there's no requirement to have a committee of the public involved. I know you're talking about different people being involved in the process for doing this project, but, do you know how many communities actually have a wastewater committee?
You mean like a comparable committee for stormwater management?
Yeah.
Comparable wastewater communities?
This might be a little off the subject, but still dealing with-
I think very, I would answer that very few have established committees for that purpose, and what's being actively discussed in Rhode Island are, because there is state-enabling legislation for stormwater utility districts, so our most urbanized communities that have much higher costs involved in maintaining their infrastructure are looking at options for how to finance some of it.
I think it's called wastewater, I think.
But, we have wastewater committees.
I think that's the official term, it's storming.
This plan has nothing to do with wastewater, this is stormwater.
Just stormwater.
Just for clarification.
Thank you.
Just, and one last point, there, we are very flexible, but there is a requirement before the plan is finished, that there be some opportunity for some public input or participation, but that, that's been forecast through like a public meeting, and, so we're very, the department's very comfortable with the town's plans to do the project.
Scott, you all set?
Yes.
Okay.
I can make a motion?
Sure, please.
Remove that we approve the agreement between the town of Hopkinton and RIDEM, which will allow the town to be eligible for a grant in the amount of $25,000 for, to develop a stormwater management program plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I love the SWMPP, the swamp. I thought that was really appropriate. It's called swamp. I know it's an acronym, but can you say, absolutely appropriate.
It is.
All right, what do we have?
Next on the agenda under new business is to consider, discuss, and act upon an agreement between the town of Hopkinton and Fussin' O'Neill, Inc., to assist the town in the development and implementation of the town-wide stormwater management program plan.
Okay, move that the Hopkinton Town Council approve the agreement between the town of Hopkinton and Fussin' O'Neill, whereby they will assist in the development and implementation of a town-wide stormwater management program plan.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Sylvia.
I asked Bill earlier, perhaps for the record, you could let, let us know, the, that I just let everybody know that we have gone out to bid with Fussin', Fussin' O'Neill in the past, and their contract, we would be going out to bid again next, you said, when was it?
In the spring.
Right, so, okay, just to let people know, this is something that we have gone out to bid and selected them in the past, and they're our current engineering firm that we rely upon and have worked with and appreciate. Is anyone here tonight?
Yes.
Good gentleman.
I'd like to thank Councilor Thompson for bringing that up, because I was reading this, that entered my mind about the bidding, so the bidding situation won't be a problem, so, it's good, I thank you.
And Jim Reardon is here tonight, if the council has any further questions.
Barbara?
Mine is sort of a question, but it's a comment. In the contract, the grantee shall ensure that at least 10 percent of the dollar value of entire grant project performed shall be performed by a disadvantaged business enterprise, and also that 20 percent agrees to use non-toxic ink and recycled paper. This is something Fussin' O'Neill will take care of, we do not have to deal with this, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, if you could, please. I just want, these are two kind of tiny-
No, no, absolutely, and I understand the items that you mean. In the proposal that we sent, we reflected those items from the grant agreement that related to minority business enterprises, women-owned business enterprises.
So you will take care of that for us?
So we'll take care of that.
The only question I have for you, thank you.
Sure.
David? Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this? Okay, we have a motion that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to discuss and consider the adoption of a resolution whereby the Hopkinton Town Council respectfully requests that the legislative delegations of the towns of Hopkinton, Charlestown, and Richmond, as well as the city of Cranston, take all steps necessary to include an appropriation in the amount of $258,866 to Cranston and $158,290.12 to Charahoe in the fiscal year 2014 state budget. I want to just give everyone an idea of how this came about. I attended with Bill McGary and the other town council presidents, Joe Reddish from Richmond and Tom Gents from Charlestown, and the superintendent Barry Ritchie had asked the three presidents to help out with some certain matters, and this being one of them, and basically, this, this issue was, I believe, litigated and mediated in Charahoe's favor, and it was regarding the career and technical center's salary, benefits, and travel expenses to the tune of $158,290. So this matter has been litigated, as I mentioned, and mediated in Charahoe's favor. We just are asking our representatives at the State House and the governor to include it in their upcoming budget, so that they can award it to Charahoe. So I thought it was an easy thing to do for, for Charahoe, because oftentimes, we have a chance to give them, or try and get them some money, because we don't really partake in their money issues, but I thought this was an easy thing to do for us, and that's basically how it came about, and I hope we can pass the resolution.
I make a motion that that resolution is suggested be approved. Should I read it?
No, all right.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion?
Yes. What I found interesting is I contacted Mayor Huang of Cranston today, and he didn't know anything about it. Now, I know the mayor doesn't run the schools, but you would have thought that the superintendent of schools or the chairman of the school committee or the council would have passed on to the mayor, and, but I do have a copy of the communication, I made sure that the council president, the town manager, knew that, but I just find it, he didn't know what I was talking about, and obviously, it's a financial issue, but I was reading something, I was trying to find it, but there's a bigger issue here that concerns me, and that is the discontinued lack of appreciation, I think, the state has regarding vocational technical education. It's my understanding, if I stand corrected, that Davies Vo Tech and Met School are like totally funded by the state, and these others aren't. I believe that the children of Washington County, as well as any other part of the state that has these vocational schools, they should receive the same consideration financially from the state that these other two schools do. They're all Rhode Island's children, and I think maybe we should think of coming up a resolution as something insisting that the state treat all vocational technical schools the same when it comes to finances, because, and I was trying to look at it, but I was looking at a part in here that said, that said like, Charahoe takes in like Charahoe, Westerly, Narragansett, I believe, South Kingston, I was looking at the list here, but it would seem that it's, uh, the discipline is that they would, we should probably address that somehow. That's all I got to say, but I'm proud to move that, I'm a little surprised, and I've known Mayor Huang for several years now, that just as a courtesy to Mayor Cranston to know about this.
That's because it began in 2008. This is all from 2008, so probably in four years, he, if he was there, great, but if not, he may just not have known of it. That's when it began.
But it's a money issue, when you think that-
Right.
Normally, the mayor would-
Oh, they're richer than us, Scott, so, that's why. Anyway, Sylvia, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have to admit, it is disappointing that we would even have to bother to do such a thing. If there's an agreement that's been made and it involved state government with the town and the school department, and RIDE, and on and on, you would think it would just be handled, and as far as I'm concerned, they should, it just should be paid- just be handled. And as far as I'm concerned, they should, it just should be paid out, cut a check, and you pay them. You don't have to ask for a special appropriation, but obviously, anyway, it's just disappointing that it doesn't work that way. So we'll do whatever we need to do to support the schools so that they can get the money they need.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, Frank, I'm a little new on the scene here. How do we get tied in with Cranston?
I think I got.
Okay, not sure.
A suit was brought by Charahoe and Cranston to recoup these funds because they were both in identical positions in terms of receiving the funds. So the two, you know, the two school departments basically were claiming they were owed this money. So they joined together to file a suit against the Department of Education in order to get these funds. A settlement was reached. They met, talked about, and settled it. But the settlement was contingent upon funding being provided by the state to fund the settlement, because the Department of Education would not take the funds out of their budget. So they wanted the governor to appropriate additional funds in order to pay this settlement.
Has the Department of Education included these funds in their budget request?
No, they will not include them.
So they approved giving us the money, but they didn't put the money in their budget?
Right. They said that the governor needed to appropriate it directly. And so you can see the problem. The governor's got to put into his budget, I forget, I don't know how much it totals, over $300,000, to fund this settlement to not afford to go through. So that the Cranston School Department, Charahoe School Department are in the same position, they're just getting different funds of money. That's how we all kind of wound up in the thing together.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so we have a motion? Was it seconded, Lisa?
It's just reserved.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the new business agenda is discussion regarding the setting of the March 20th, 2013 as a workshop for 2013 Community Development Block Grant Application. Sylvia, did you?
Yeah, I wanted to point out that we only had a workshop one year. We don't normally, or we have never had workshops for this purpose. As you could see from the documents, there'll be a February 14th for the first hearing in Richmond where applications from nonprofits, or they can come in and make their comments. The Hopkinton Planning Board has a date while they're, they'll take up these items. The town council will have their hearing on the matter on April 15th, but we'll actually, the town will actually be in receipt of all the applications, I think it's like February 21st, from Jim's memo. So we don't need a workshop. We only had a workshop one year because one council was going to be on vacation and, or out of state and requested that we have a workshop. So I don't see a need for a workshop. It would just be, I don't know, it's unnecessary. So we'll have our hearing, and we'll get those applications in February. We'll have plenty of time to look at them, and then ask our questions.
Okay. Barbara?
I was the one who asked for that workshop, and I'm still asking for it for March 20th. We get the applications from CDBG February 21st. It is up to us to go through the applications and then to be able to ask the people from, who have applied, they would come to our hearings so that we could discuss with them what they wanted, why they wanted it, so that we have some idea of how we would like to position them in the CDBG approval process. If we only meet on April 15th as a hearing, then we have no time to hear from them and be able to think about how we think that the applications should be listed before the application is due four days later, on April 19th. So I want to ask again for having a meeting on the 20th so that we can look at the CDBG, be able to talk to the people who are putting the applications in, because this is our money given to this town and for this town. And then we'll be able to discuss it amongst ourselves and amongst the people here, so that when we come to the public hearing, we will, each of us have a list of how we would like to see these things in priority. And I think that's important. This is money that we probably get 20% of what we ask for, but it is money that I think we need to be able to really think about how we want to distribute it in the town and not just have no chance to think about it. So I would very much like to have the March 20th time to review the application.
Yep.
There was one thing I forgot to bring up. The workshop that we had last year, it happened to be on April 9th, 2012, and the, not all, not all the applicants were there in attendance, and at that particular workshop, no questions were asked of anyone. It was only for council information, I guess. But the, I just want to caution everybody that the hearing schedule has been, the way we've had it has worked for years. I don't need a workshop to talk to some of the people, because they're not required to be there. At the hearing that we have, they'll all be there, because they all have a stake in this, and we can ask them all the questions we want. We'll have the applications ahead of time. So I don't, I don't need, well, anyway, so I don't want to get into the personalities about it, but I don't see a need for it.
Scott, do you have any opinion on it?
I would concur with Councilor Thompson on this. I think that we both have an objective and subjective view of these things. I know Council Husband is new to the council, but a lot of us pretty well know these groups. We also have a view on what we believe individually, what would benefit Hopkins, and as far as what social welfare groups, we should put projects and how we should rank them. And there's always maybe some disagreement among us. I know, I think it was last year, you had a situation where somebody thought the other areas were taken care of in the past, and they didn't rank them as high, if I remember correctly. So I just prefer to have that here. You know, this town council as a body, as an institution, deserves the respect enough that when people come and expect money from the town of Hopkins, they should appear or have a representative. And I think what Councilor, not Council Capable, Councilor Thompson just pointed out is the fact that we had a workshop and not everybody showed up.
Tom and I were missing. We said we couldn't make that time. Last year, it was specific. We both had time constraints that we could not come to the meeting, and we needed to be here. So we had to send things by letter, because we couldn't be at the hearing. You need to be able to speak to people to find out what you would like to do and how you'd like to do it. There are some organizations that will need more attention one year than another set of organizations. We lost all of our money for renovating homes, because it all went into another category. We lost everything. We can't afford to do that. There are things that are important for us to make sure that CDBG knows are important, and we need to speak to people. We need to speak among ourselves and say, this is what is important for our town. This is where we'd like our money to go. But last year specifically, it was done in a tight timeframe. Both Tom and I could not make it, and it was most frustrating that you only got to see it at the one hearing, and now suddenly you had to juggle things. I think it's something, since it is up to $100,000, that we need to give away, that we should spend some time looking at that, so that we can make our decision on what makes the most sense for the town. But we lost all of the money that we could have done anything for renovating homes, and I thought that was awful.
Barbara, if I could just, no, one second. You're going to be here this time, though, right?
Yes, absolutely. So I'd like to be there at the March 20th and April 15th. If you, if you only discuss on the 15th, you have to not only hear it, you have to discuss it and make the decision that night, because the application is due four days later, April 19th. I'm saying that you need at least a couple of weeks to think about it, balance it, ask other questions if you need, so that we can make a determination where this $100,000 goes.
Well, it's only a ranking. We don't, we don't.
I understand that.
It's not, it's not our money directly, but it does come to the town. But I want to ask the clerk if I could. Lisa, prior to these, this meeting, I guess, we would have the informational packets for these nonprofits?
Well, I would believe that that was the case. The applications will do the town from the outside agencies on February 21st.
Okay.
I believe the board of, day board will, will discuss them first, but I would expect that they constantly have them.
I guess is my point. Would we have these well in advance for us to do our own ranking and have any questions for that night? Jim, could you maybe weigh in on that for a second? Please.
Sure. It's my intention to give the council everything that comes in by the 21st as soon as possible, which is, in this case, is going to be almost two months before the public hearing, before the town council. So you'll have, you'll have a lot more time than you had last year. I know it was a problem last year. You'll have a lot more time this year to sit back and read them thoroughly, rank them, et cetera.
Okay, I think that helps. Thank you. David, did you have any?
As long as we have enough time to prioritize the lists and, and look over the information that's provided to us. I don't have any problem with this, but I want, I want that time to prioritize and to have some discussion on the matter.
Yeah.
Which would be at the public hearing.
Last year was condensed, so, you know, that was a, just a quick process, unfortunately. But this year, we'll have plenty of time, and I don't think that we'll, given that two-month timeframe, I don't think that we'll need to have a workshop.
Can we expect these organizations to come in to see us at the, at the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So this, this would suffice in a sense, as opposed to maybe a workshop with them coming in?
Yeah, but it's, if they're not required to at the workshop, that's the problem.
Okay, right.
Oh, by the way, at that workshop, just for the, so you, everybody's on the same page, the workshop that we did have, I was missing and Barbara was missing. Tom ran the meeting. I told everyone I would not be here, because I thought the meeting was not for the right purpose. So I refused to go, and Tom ran the meeting.
Okay. So, Scott, one second. Barbara?
The other thing that we need to make sure, if we could, Jim, this is a question for you, is that the CDBG funds that we rank, in the past, CDBG has also pre-assigned money without our input. Will we make sure that we know what is pre-assigned at that same meeting or at the time we receive the CDBG funds? Remember, they have
Yes.
Pre-assigned money that we have no control over?
Correct. Sometimes they're
And they're not doing that.
Pre-commitments. Well, I'd like, keep in mind that on the 14th of February, we're going to have a tri-town meeting in Richmond. And Mr. Marshon, who's our CDBG coordinator, will be there running it. There will be a good number, it was very well-attended the last couple of years I went. Some of the agencies that are going to be applying to us will be there. So at, I would suggest that in lieu of a workshop, we could use that 14th meeting as an opportunity to give some guidance to the applicants coming in here, to find out from Jeff what the state has pre-committed to. Again, the only pre-commitment that I'm aware of was the Rockville Mill.
The Rockville Mill, many years in a row, but it cost us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had no control over, and it was a major error. And they even admitted it as a major error. I don't want to see that happen again. We don't get that much money. And when we get the money, I want to make sure that our fingers are on it.
Okay, this is a scheduling motion, so let's try and stick to a scheduling issue there.
So do we need a motion to set a, just set the hearing date? What was the hearing date for Hopkinton? It was the April 15th?
Yeah.
You want a motion?
No, not for the, not for the public hearing, no.
Set in the workshop, that's all. I guess, Scott, do you want?
I just wanted to say that when I, the comment wasn't directed to about Council Capable or Buck. It was about these organizations. They should, if the council has a meeting, they should have a representative here. And I believe that the turnout, and I did take into consideration Councilor's, Capable's concern about RIDE Cam last year, and I did bring that up.
Okay.
Yeah, so there are opportunities, which you were saying, and if anybody wants to ask any questions early on, they could go to Richmond on the 14th, and then the Hopkinton Planning Board's going to take it up, so there's another chance. And then we'll have our town council hearing on April 15th.
Correct.
So that would be our third chance.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'd like to ask the planner, I believe that the final decision is the state's decision, and also, I believe, they take into consideration the requests of other area towns in compiling what we get, too. I mean, they also consider Richmond and Charleston, I believe, don't they, when it comes to human resources? So it's not, those factors also go into the ultimate decision. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, you're, you're right on both counts. The state does have the final say as to who gets what, and it is competitive across the state. Everything that we approve here is going to be competing against other applications in other towns.
But also, they take into consideration, if it's like a social welfare thing like Richmond or Charleston, they will also consider supporting that organization by including what they think our share should be.
Correct. A number of the applicants who apply through Hopkinton also have similar applications in other towns, and quite often, they're funded in multiple towns to get enough money to get, to do the job that they, they have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, guys, let's, let's vote on this, whether we need a workshop or not. I don't think we need one based on the timeframes allotted to us this year for this, for the nonprofit stuff, for the community development block grants, so.
Can we do a vote, or do we, is consensus open?
Consensus. Scott, I'll say.
I think my opinion is stated. I'm confident with the, you gotta have a workshop.
I don't need a workshop.
I don't think we do either, based on the timeframes.
I've seen too many problems with it. I'd still like to see it.
Okay. A workshop.
Okay. So, looks like three, three, four, three, four to one, we will not have a workshop on the 20th of CDBG. Next on the agenda is the general discussion and update on the Charahoe School District security measures. Chief of Police Dave Palmer?
I've been asked to update you on, on school security since the tragedy at Sandy Hook. Want to assure you that the Hopkins police always took school security very seriously, as we do now. Obviously, this, this raises the bar. Before we, before the Sandy Hook tragedy, we had already had several active shooting, in-service training, which are eight-hour trainings that are federally funded. We actually had one about two weeks prior to the, to the shooting itself, so it's something we take very seriously. Charleston Police was there, Richmond Police, as well as Hopkinton Police. Next year, we expect that the funding comes federally, and we expect that will probably be expanded, and we will, I'd like to make that a mandatory training for all our officers. Kind of give you an idea of what we've done since the tragedy itself, is that we've actually passed out the, the updated crisis plans from all the schools within Hopkinton Police, also outside to Charleston Police and Richmond Police, because if there's an active shooter, everybody's going. And we all need to know what the other person is, or the other police department is, is doing. On January 8th, myself, Chief Johnson, and Chief Allen from Richmond and Charleston met with Barry Ritchie, the superintendent, to kind of get an idea of what they wanted with, with the police departments, because obviously, we want to give the most protection without putting out the most fear to kids. I think the, the high school and the middle school have all always been used to that. They, they developed that mentality when, when they come of age. It's in the elementary school where they have not developed that, and there's a kind of a fine line between making sure they're safe and, and putting fear in their life. So it was important to include him, and so, without going into real specifics of what our departments are doing on an everyday basis, particularly hours of what, when we're going down there, I can tell you this, is that we have a very, very active role with our police officers in all the, the schools, including, including going into Charahoe to go, to do drive-bys, recognizing that, that's Richmond, but we need to have a presence as well. We have students there, and we've, we've had a pretty good relationship. We've always had a great relationship, I should say, with Richmond Police, but our juvenile officer is very, very close to their, their resource officer. So whenever there's a, say, rumor or some information coming out that is concerning to any of the police departments, it's a quick, quick response, and it's inter-agency is very, very good. We get along great, and we've had a couple of those since then. And we've had a couple of those since then. They were not, they were rumors, but it didn't mean that we would take them any, any lighter. And I, I think you can recognize that when something like that comes out, we're going to, we're going to follow it to where we can't follow it any further. We've also reached out to the, to preschools and to kind of get on the mentality. And the mentality we've tried to portray is this, and again, we've, even before this, Charahoe Task Force is a great organization. They have had their students trying, trying to keep their students involved in keeping the police informed on what we need to be informed on. Prior to this, we had, Richmond had developed what's called Text-a-Tip, which is a, a form of anonymously providing tips to the police departments that, so people will not feel any peer pressure in getting some information out to us. Obviously, that, they can be our ears. They're going to be our, they hear things that we don't hear. And we need to get out to the mentality, to the, to the staff, the administration, and to the parents, that you need to call the police if there's anything suspicious. And that's kind of been my recruitment to each one of the principals and to the directors at the preschool is, is you have, you have a lot of set of eyes with parents coming to and from a school. And, and this is, this just does not pertain to the school. It pertains to any type of crime, BNEs and such, but they have to have, they have to pick up the phone and they have to call. And I, I kind of give it a, the Monday after the Friday of the shooting, I went down to the Ashaway Elementary School. And this is, I give this as an example, is that I, I watched a gentleman 100 yards from the, from the school, should not have been there. He's Connecticut plate, the car was clearly out of place, so was me. And I sat there and watched, watched what he was doing. And he was outside, so everybody could see. And there was parent after parent after parent went by. And it was concerning to me that we didn't receive one call. And this is the mentality I need to change. When approached him, and there was really, he wasn't doing anything he shouldn't have been doing. But I think this is what we need to get out to the, to, to the public is, and that's what we're trying to do through the, through the newsletters with the school department, through the Charahoe Task Force, to get the parents more involved, get students more involved, and calling the police. There's only so many police officers out there, but there's a lot of public out there. And if we get, I'd rather get 50 calls that turn out to be nothing than to miss the one call that we really needed to get. And so, that's kind of the mentality that we're trying to betray. We have to recognize that this is the game changer, that we're not going back to what it was before. The elementary school have been drawn into a volatile situation, and hopefully, we can, we can keep this, keep this to a minimum. But I think what, the way it's going to be done is keeping a presence there and, and having deterrence that, that's not, basically, not, not a soft, soft target at all. I've reached out to the, to the principals, and this is kind of a, a lower level, but it certainly is probably more prevalent in the schools, is that there's many domestics, there's always one or two children in the schools that are, their families are in disarray. And one of the parents may, there may be, there may be restraining orders and such. And we don't always get called on those. I'd like to get ahead of the curve on those and, and, and get them to call us before there's, I say, a family, a, a, a family problem in school, whether it be a teacher, a parent, conference, let us know about this. In one instance, since this, I suggest that we had an officer in the, in nearby vicinity because one of, the gentleman was a, kind of a volatile person. And so, he had to drive by the police officer to, to go to his conference. Or put some, something in his mentality that, gee, the police are right around the corner. This is what, what we as the community, Charleston, Richmond, and Hopkinton, want to get out. Get, get ahead of the curve. You hear something that's going on that is suspicious. If you have problems within the school department, don't wait until it's exasperated, until now you're calling us when we could be in the area. So these are the things that I've, that we have talked to, to the school departments. I think they're very, very receptive. I stopped by last week to all the, the school departments to find out what, what we could do better. And they were, they're very excited about how it's been handled. They, they just hope it continues, and I expect that it's, it's going to continue for a while.
Thanks, Chief. David, do you have any questions? Barbara?
I know you're working with Richmond, and Charahoe is very much on the Richmond side of the border. And I know the police are really in charge of Charahoe and Richmond. How are you working with them? Because the buildings are so scattered, the middle school and the high school, and the, the CTC Center. I mean, everything is very scattered. Have you consulted with Richmond, you, Charleston and Hopkinton, on how you would handle that whole facility? I mean, who comes in from which angles?
Yes. Yeah. We have talked about that, yes.
Because that's such a huge structure. I just don't even know how you'd.
Those are.
Without tripping on each other.
Those are things that have already been in place prior to the, to the tragedy. So when we were doing active shooting, seminars down at Charahoe, they were at Charahoe, and, and that's discussed at that time, what department's going where, so that we're not, like, as you say, tripping over each other. You don't want five here and nobody over here. We did, we have discussed that. And when it's not, it's not, say, an active shooter, we're going down there on just an everyday basis. Basically, we're allowing, Richmond is the lead, and their SRO is their contact person. So when we're down there, if we're going into the schools, the SRO officer knows that we're there.
Okay. And you've been talking to the elementary schools and organizing that, how you'd handle those schools, too?
Yes. We, we expect, I think it's sometime this month, they haven't set a date yet, but they have a, they have a safety conference. At least, I know Ashaway is. I'm not sure about Ho Valley, but, but we'll be in contact with them. And this will be, this will turn out to be a, a regular thing, and, and it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yes, a second?
Yes.
Sylvia?
I, from my own experiences with, with my children, when they were young, elementary school age, and that was, that just went to the fourth grade then, at that time. I think one of the things that I think we all know is that the more involvement that the, that a officer, that the police department actually has on one-to-one with a class in those lower grades, so they can be up close to an officer, so they can touch the uniform, touch the badge, meet the fellow, hear your voice, which is very reassuring. I think that if you had interactions with them, however often the school, for instance, if there was something, some activity, or for some reason, you were at, in the auditorium, you got to get up close with the kids and greet them, I think that, I think that goes a long way, especially for the young kids, so that they don't, they're, they have actually met their local police officer, they know his badge number, or, oh, Mom, he was a nice guy. I mean, the more interaction you have, I think, with the young grades, I think it's a good idea. So I, I'd applaud you if you can get in there or greet them when they come and go, when they're on their way, when they're coming in the morning, or they're getting on the bus. I think it's important, at a, at a young age, that they meet. They're, just like they do with open houses and when they have fire departments, and they get to see the truck, the fire truck. So at any opportunity that you get to do that, I think it would be welcomed by the school department, and I think the kids would enjoy it for sure.
And when I say we have presence there, presence isn't just driving through there. At least one day, at one time a day, our officers are getting out and walking the hallways.
Oh, good.
And so, and I know it's a big difference from the first time I went down there to, to now, when I went down the, last time there. They, they're getting more comfortable you being there. It's not such a big deal as a police officer being in the school. So I think it's a, it's a good thing on many levels, that I think they're getting more comfortable around police officers. And just having us in there is not as traumatic as it, you know, as it was.
Not for bad reasons, for good reasons.
Correct. Correct. And they, and they start looking at you as a friend, not a foe.
I know what you mean, yeah.
Scott, do you have any comments?
Was the Rhode Island State Police involved in any of these discussions?
I spoke to Lieutenant Newberg out of the Ho Valley barracks, and, and I asked him if he could have his officers drive through there. I know they were at the, at the beginning. I'm not sure if they still are right now, but for the first couple of weeks, I know they were.
But they haven't been involved in any meetings at Charahoe at all?
Yeah. When we go to, we go to the Charahoe Task Force, sometimes he's there, they're there. They also have a, a different task force. It's a drug task force, which is.
They have, they've had them for years.
They, the troopers always go to that, so.
The only observation, I wasn't, I wasn't going to really comment, but I think if you were to take school security throughout the United States, I mean, it probably varies from one place to another. It's probably a little more, like in New York City, I'm sure, it's a little more stringent, I would assume, with the urban areas. But, I mean, most schools, I would imagine, you have to buzz your way in. You have to talk to a speaker. You just can't walk into a school nowadays, I think.
That's why it is here now.
Yeah. Because I know, even when we have a meeting, you go in, it says, report to the office if you go in. But I think, is there any, is there any school buildings in Charahoe that you can automatically walk into without being, you know, putting a buzzer in?
Not that I've gone to.
Yeah. I have no other comments.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, Chief, I want to applaud you and your department for this extra security measures. I know when we were at the omnibus meeting, Barry Ritchie, the superintendent, did say how proud he was of the three departments and the three chiefs, and you included. So I want to thank you for all your efforts. And I just had a quick question, I guess, on, how do you see briefly, like, long-term? Do you think there's going to be a resource officer in every school, you think, eventually down the road? Do you, you think time will tell? Who knows?
You know, I've reached out to some people I know about trying to see about getting some type of, some grants and such. I think there's going to be some grants that are coming. Would it be every, every school? I'm not sure if they, the, the United States can afford it. I mean, there's a lot of schools out there, and, you know, time will tell. And obviously, our children are our greatest resources, so if you're going to invest in anything, I guess, that's the best place to invest, so.
I think there's 156,000 schools or something like that in the country. So anyway, that puts it in perspective. Anyway, does anybody else have anything for Chief Palmer? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is to set a hearing date for the waiver of interest on overdue quarterly tax payment proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 19 Taxation, sponsored by.
Council President Lynn Dalton.
What, how can we, when can we get this on?
It has to be advertised three times prior to a, a meeting. So I believe in looking at the calendar coming up. It looks like March 1st will be your earliest opportunity.
Okay. Anybody have objections to that, or?
No.
Okay. Let's do that. March 4th, 2013. Okay. Thank you. Lisa. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions. Consider appointments to the following boards and commissions: Affordable Housing Partnership, Animal Control Commission, and Tax Board of Review. Anyone want to make?
I move that we appoint Mimi Carlson to the Affordable Housing Partnership, or I should say, reappoint.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we have three, four.
Should I abstain because I wasn't there for that?
You were not there. You have to abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay. So one abstention, one no, three.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Dave doesn't have to abstain just because he did an interview. She can still have an opinion on whether she should be on the board. So it's not, it's not a prerequisite to voting that you have interviewed her. Whether you want to do it, Dave, or not, is up to you.
I'll abstain.
Okay, Dave.
Okay.
I'd like to make an appointment of Robert Green to the Animal Control Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Also like to make Jeff Hall an appointment to the Tax Board of Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I move that we appoint Mike Barancato to the Tax Board of Review.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Next is the second and last public forum. Anyone out there wishing to speak? Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.